We're good? All right, it is six o'clock and I will call the meeting to order. Alicia, would you do a roll call please?
Yes. Lacey Astor, here. Cherie Lang, here. Bruce Valargan?
Here.
Lori Valargan?
Here.
Matt Foucault?
Here.
Marge Valil?
Here.
Thank you. Our district mission, together we engage, educate and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Would someone care to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Marge, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Lacey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries done. Neither Dr. Bezig nor I had any requests for public comment, so we can move on to the interviews with our applicants for the board vacancy.
All set.
One of the applicants, Jeremy Lesha, has withdrawn his candidacy due to a conflict with coaching responsibilities that he has right now.
It's freezing in the summer and hot in the winter. I never get hot and I get hot.
It is warm.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Would you just do a little introduction for the board and then we'll see if anybody has any questions for you?
Sounds good. My name is Michelle Lesha. I am a resident of Somerset for, I think I put 14 years, yep, 14, almost 15 years. My husband, Jeremy, and I and the kids have moved down here since 2007 and have resided in Somerset. I have two kids, a senior in high school and a sophomore in high school. We moved down here specifically because I obtained employment in St. Craig County as a social worker and I have worked in St. Craig County ever since we moved here, so I've continued that route. My interest in the school board has been going off and on probably for the last five or six years and I've kind of hesitated and gone back and forth. You have kids in school, do you want to be on the board? There's pros and cons both ways, because I definitely don't want anything that I would do to impact my kids in the district and I know that that's really hard. So I kind of wanted to wait, also with my kids being really busy and active in sports, that has also taken a lot of my time. Now I have a senior that is transitioning out, my time will be a little bit more freed up, and so here I am. And I know I filled this questionnaire out like two weeks ago and I can't even remember everything I put in it, to be honest. So, go ahead and ask questions.
All right. Matt, do you have any questions you'd like to start with?
I do not.
All right. Lacey, Cherie?
I don't have anything right now, I'm just rereading your...
Can I reread it?
Have you had an opportunity to watch board meetings this year at all?
Yeah, so ever since really the pandemic and everything shut down, my husband and I have tuned into the board meetings online and have watched, I want to say, almost every one of them for the last couple of years, just so we're up to date on what's going on with all the changes and, I mean, there's so many changes that have been taking place in the last couple of years, so we want to make sure that our kids are in the know as well.
Bruce, did you have any question?
Yeah. So, coming to a board meeting with an open mind, I guess, how do you make difficult decisions based on the information provided maybe at the meeting that's not only best for just your family but then the whole community?
Well, I think it's important for, first of all, transparency to take place, you know, if the board's going to make a decision or whatever, that the community knows, so that way they can help provide input and that our job as a board would be able to listen to the community as well as the staff that work here, because it's not just about my family, it's about the staff that work here, the students that go to school here. You know, the community has some input for sure, but I really like the parents of the kids that go here, I think, really play a big factor in a decision that gets made.
Marge, second question? So, Michelle, what do you think is the most important thing for a school board member to keep in mind as they're making decisions?
I think that it's important to look at the bigger picture. I think you have to weigh all the options and what's in the best interest of everyone. You know, I look at this board in the last couple of years and that has been something that's been very difficult and I think that as a team, to get along and make sure that we're making decisions based on what's in the best interest of everybody, I think is really important. I mean, it's like everything, right? You weigh your options, should I get a new job, should I stay at my old job? You know, the grass isn't always greener when you make a decision, there's going to be some pushback and when we make a decision, you have to stand towards it and be open to getting the feedback and it's not going to be always the best, it's not, people are going to be mad, but you have to be able to take a look at that and listen to them so that way you can hear everybody. They just want to be heard. But being able to be able to take some heat, I think, is important in this role as well, especially right now during a time where there is such controversy.
Did anybody have any follow-up questions for Michelle?
You had said transparency and getting input, do you have any ideas or how do you think it's best to do that, to be able to hear everyone? I think that's kind of the, you know, I mean, I hear that from a lot of people and I'm just curious what your... How would you do that?
You know, I know that we've done surveys in the past. Surveys have sometimes been successful and sometimes they've failed, partially because when you're doing anything in email form or written format, the content behind that is sometimes misinterpreted, right? Somebody can be emailing you something and you're just kind of feeling maybe attacked when that might not be an attack, it might be just "hear me out," right? You know, I think that, you know, having phone conversations with somebody, being able to listen to them, ask follow-up questions with, just having normal human interaction, something that we haven't really been able to do in the last couple of years. A phone call is fine, but emails are really tough. Written communication is tough. Surveys are tough because people are constantly hiding behind computers and it's so easy to attack behind a computer that it's not even productive. So, I think that we just need to start listening to people and having conversations with students, faculty, you know, parents, just listening to them and not necessarily having everything written down or having a survey. You know, I've had, there was a job I had, you know, you get a survey every other week and you just, "On a scale of one to five, well, that's a five, that's a five, I feel good about it, I feel good about it, it's just easier to pick," or, you know, all the negatives, so I, just having a conversation is really important.
Did anybody else have any more questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
For coming in.
Yes, I will.
No problem.
Do you want to try Gary again?
I will.
Trying to remember to ask the same questions of each other, that kind of balances things out there.
Hello?
Hello, Polly, is Gary available? This is Lori, I'm calling from the Somerset School Board meeting.
Hi, Lori, he's flying right now into Minneapolis.
Okay, so I had two cell phone numbers for him, so I need to call the other one now.
Yeah, he's supposed to be landing like about seven something.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome, thank you, bye.
Okay. So, now I tried the other phone number first and I got a recording, so I'll try again later.
Ian?
Hello?
Hello.
So, Ian, would you just introduce yourself and tell Gary a little bit about yourself and then we will ask you some questions?
Okay. My name's Ian McDonald, I live in, on Abbey Lane, been here for seventeen years? Moved here in '04. Zoom came to land, it's close. Been involved with the music program with my daughter and son. Helped out with fishing tournaments. Had some opinions on the construction project a couple of years ago, ended up sitting on that. And I have a daughter just graduated last year and a son who is in 10th grade.
Matt, do you have any questions for Ian?
Yeah, Ian, what project did you apply for, for the role this time?
Saw the vacancy and wanted to offer myself to fill it, help the district.
Okay, thank you.
Have you watched our board meetings, like over the last six months or year or so, since COVID hit? Have a good feel for some of the conflict that we've had and some of the conversations we've had with the public and...
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Ready for all that?
Yeah. I was actually here for the last board meeting.
Coming in, I said the same thing, Michelle, just coming with an open mind to all the meetings and I guess, how would you do that, you know, come in and listen to everything that's said at the meetings and not just how you think about it, but then as a broader community and district? I guess, how would you go about, you know, listening or coming to your determination after those...
Pre-determining an outcome before you show up to a meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, I... My goal would be to have more questions and the right questions asked so that things aren't lingering out there. I mean, I can anticipate some of the problems people might have with decisions and questions being asked about them and not being asked, that they come up with later and it's frustrating for them, so try to ask those questions and see if there's a direction that can be gotten one way or the other.
Marge, did you have any questions?
No.
Lacey?
One of the things that you would put, I'm going to kind of reword my question that I gave to Michelle, but it's just the distrust between a large portion of the community. How do you think creating, what, how would you help create that trust and then kind of that best way for getting that, that input from the community?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback off of what I just said, I think it's more clarity in the discussion at the table before things are voted on, so that it's not something that wasn't asked, if people get frustrated, "Why didn't we try X, Y, or Z?" See if that was an option. Just kind of bring more, more ideas to the table.
Thank you. Ian, what do you think is the most important thing a board member should keep in mind when they're making decisions?
I guess keeping in mind what is going to be the most successful for the school, the students and the staff and administration. That's not going to always jive with personal opinions, but... But that, all opinions should be represented.
How do you go about representing everybody's opinion?
You can't. I mean, I would assume that all the board members, no parents in the district, can talk to them. Through that filter, you're kind of getting everybody's input.
Are you aware that we started doing our listening session before our last meeting?
I'm aware, I've not attended one, but I was here just before the last one.
Which I think will be a good option for us to be able to get more feedback as well from the community, for some people who don't want to speak at a board meeting, so...
Yep. No, it sounded like it went well, it was a good idea.
Did anybody have any other questions for Ian? All right, I think we're good, thank you so much for coming in and making the accommodations of schedule.
I'll try Gary again.
Polly, I can try, yeah.
Ian, make sure you say...
Hello, this is Gary, please leave me a message with your phone number. Deja me un caso por favor.
Happy.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I can get through it at all, I don't have a lot of experience on trying to make a phone call on the airplane.
Hello, Jenny, how are you?
I'm doing well, hi!
Good. Would you introduce yourself and tell the board a little bit about yourself and then we'll get into some questions?
Certainly. Well, my name's Jenny Linder, I have lived in Somerset for about eight years. I have four kids in this, well, soon to be in the school, I have an eighth grader, a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a junior kindergartner next year, so... I guess I'm just very involved in so many aspects of Somerset, sports, clubs, I know a lot of parents and I'm just kind of looking to be a vote and a voice for the parents. I feel like a lot of us are on the same page and I really care about school, I just kind of, I'm stepping up to this because it almost feels like a responsibility just to, for my kids and for my community and, yeah.
Hold on, Jenny. Alicia, I don't think the livestream's working.
It's on still.
Is it?
Yep.
Yeah, it kind of looks like it's having some troubles right now.
I heard everything she said.
With the, no, with YouTube, Matt.
Oh, oh, I see.
It's still counting. I know, but it'll keep counting too, even if it's not streaming. The internet has had a lot of issues today here and I'm wondering if it's that.
We're recording as well, so...
It is getting recorded, yep, so even if that doesn't work, everything is getting recorded.
Sound, oh.
I will, I will text Jason though.
Okay.
And so if we are not being livestreamed now, we can put the recording up later? Is that how it works?
Yeah. Yeah, the recording will be available if that's how, if that's what we need to post and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, no worries. I guess, I'm a dental hygienist, I have been in the dental field for sixteen years, I know a lot about healthcare and how to run a, you know, successful dental office. I've never been in a position of board, school board or anything, I just, I'm finding myself getting more involved as I get older and my kids get older and our sports are starting to get much more intense and need a lot of volunteering, I need a lot of help and I guess I'm just kind of finding myself in positions where I'm like, "Well, I can do this, I can help out, I can be a voice, I can..." And I'm just trying to, trying to do that. As you've probably read, I have pretty strong conservative values and I guess I align pretty textbook with most of those conservative views, so if you're wondering how I would vote on things, you know, that's the directions I would go. I think our school has been doing absolutely wonderful, I think, I love this school, my kids love this school, they never have gone, come home saying they dislike it, besides some of that mass stuff, but I'm glad that's gone and I guess I'd like to just kind of keep it that way.
Questions for Jenny? Have you been watching? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, Jenny, so you said you're a very strong conservative, how do you put your conservative views aside when you truly got to make a decision that's, that's got to be the middle of the road and it's got to be right for the district? Are you able to do that?
Yes, I definitely can compromise a lot. My, I have kids, I have to compromise constantly, I would have to say. I do, I am very vocal and like to put my opinions out there, but I'm also want to reach good decisions and, you know, I want everything, or, you know, we're not the only voice out there, of course, so I like to, you know, come to compromises and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Have you had an opportunity to watch our board meetings over the last six months or twelve months?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're, it's a lot of stuff that touches on a lot of different things, obviously, I've been, I've tried to watch a number of them, two or three, I would say, and it sounds like you talk about a lot of different things and I'm not coming in with an agenda or anything, you know, saying, "I want to change this," I just, like I said, when it comes to decisions, I just want to be a voice for the parents.
Are you familiar, we started doing meeting, we have a couple of our board members available an hour before our second meeting of the month to be able to have one-on-ones with parents.
That's great, yeah.
I think that's been a good opportunity.
I think so too, especially for people who don't want to, you know, be on Facebook or, you know, stuff like that, so...
Matt, can I ask the question I was asking? Just trying to keep up. You know, coming in, you know, you said that, you know, you have a conservative coming into things, which is fine, but again, as Matt kind of noted, you know, listening to not just what's best for you or what you thinking, I mean, listening to our community as a whole and making your decisions based on what's best for the district rather than just what you thought before the meeting, I guess, how would you remain open to that?
Well, it's always conversation that can, you know, persuade anybody, I would think. You know, I'm not dead set on, you know, this or that, I'm learning as I go, a lot of it is. There's a few things that I, I really, you know, all this racist stuff in schools and adding that critical race theory and, you know, things like that, I guess I'm kind of dead set against that. There's some things like that where, you know, I don't think I budge all that much because I don't think there's any room for politics in schools. I guess that's my biggest thing, is I would like to keep politics out of schools and I think it should just be academics and, you know, let's focus on that because that's what we're here for.
Lacey?
Will you kind of ask the question, answer the question that I asked of the other? So, Marge, did you have anything?
Not really, I just wanted to, like, see how you'd stay non-partisan.
Yeah. I guess I put it out there that I'm very conservative, just, you know, I think it's good that people know where I stand and where I come from coming into it, but I don't think school is a very political place, I don't think it should be and I, you know, it's, I don't think a lot of things come down to that. And like I said, I, if there's one thing I feel, it's that politics need to stay out of school.
So Jenny, when you're making a decision, we make lots of decisions as board members, what's the number one thing that you would be keeping in mind as you're making decisions?
My children. I push education pretty hard on my kids, I don't think that high school is the end to education and I don't want anybody, or my family members, to think they, you know, that this is it, we're done, you know? No, what are, what is it leading to? You know, so I guess it's always what can prepare them better for college? What can prepare them better for the next step? Which direction, you know, are they going to go with stuffs? So, no, I would say my primary focus is good education for my kids.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for Jenny? All right, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. I can't get a hold of Jason.
Yep, that's fine.
Polly, I guess it's, I'll try Gary again or...
I can, I don't think we're going to get him until after seven though, but I can try one more time.
Hello, this is Gary, please leave me a message with your phone number.
Good faith attempts are...
Okay, so, when we met, the last time we met and talked about how we were going to proceed with this, Mark had a suggestion of doing two, a round of voting where we narrowed it down to two candidates and then another round after that. Bruce and I were talking before the agenda was posted and Bruce had another suggestion. Do you want to talk about that, Bruce?
Yeah, it was just to get down to the two candidates, you know, still have the two votes, but the first one, we vote for, you know, number one is, you know, person X, number two selection would be person Y, and then we all hand it in, we go through and she counts the number ones, okay, now we have a tie for that second and third. Okay, now we have a tie for that second and third person. Now whoever has the most second place votes would be that second person into the, the final two, I guess. Or if we had a cross of two is all across the board and then we voted for, you know, and then the second place votes, whoever has the highest two second place votes would then be, to get us to our final two. And then we do our vote and if it's three-three, like you guys said in the meeting, you flip a card or you vote again if someone's gonna switch, but I just think so we don't have to try to revote a second time after this first vote. Let's get it narrowed to the two, so you have your top person. Hopefully we don't need to go into the seconds, but let me have the second, so just so they're there for reference.
So Bruce's suggestion is that, um, in the first round of voting, um, Alicia has, uh, paper ballots with all of the names on them. So you're gonna put a number one by the person who would be your first choice and a number two by the person who would be your second choice. And Bruce's suggestion to do it this way is to try to make, to give us an, another way to narrow it down to the top two more quickly. Does, is this something that you would like to, um, try in our first round of voting? See how it works?
So, two votes basically, one, our top choice, second choice.
Yes.
And if we have, if we have the top two within the first, we don't even need to count the, that second choice.
But regardless, there'll be a second round of voting.
Yep.
Right, well, unless we're...
You nan?
Unless it's, yeah, unless it's a full one.
If, um, four people vote for the same person for the number one spot, I think we'd be done.
Could be the majority of the board?
It would be the majority of the board. So it is possible that we could be done in one round.
I'd love to get it down to two and have a second round.
Even if one person?
Even if they're, I don't know, that's just my thought, like, because I just...
Yeah, we can do that, because then, then we'd be, hopefully do the four again, but yeah.
Yeah, I think that what I just feel more comfortable versus just saying then it's one round and we're done. Yeah.
Matt have an opinion?
Matt, did you hear all that?
I think I heard most of it, the connection getting really bad. But you want to vote for number one choice and number two choice, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so in your first, um, Alicia, did you email, um, Matt what the ballot looks like?
No.
Okay, so you don't need to. But Matt, um, so what we are asking you to do, Matt's gonna text his votes to Alicia. So what we're gonna ask you to do is write down a name and put, uh, number one by it, by your first choice and then write down a second name and write down and, and put a number two for your second choice.
Good.
All right? So if we're all agreed and there's no more questions on, um, format, on how we're gonna go about doing this, then I think Alicia has some ballots for us that she can pass out. Thank you.
So ignore the top, because we just changed that.
Your two.
Too much. Okay, so you, how, do you wanna?
Is there a person who have, are there two people who have, um, a major, have? Do the, are the votes such that you can narrow it down to the two top people?
The number ones.
I believe so. You want to take this?
Take what?
Yeah. Because like these are the same exact, these are the same but opposite. So...
Come for the ones.
Alicia, you did get mine, correct?
I got yours, Matt, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a tie on the second person. We have a... So, um...
So we narrowed it down to three.
So we, yeah, we've narrowed it down to three. So we have, uh, uh, Michelle got the first, first, oh...
Number one.
Number one. And then, um, actually, if she takes number one, then, uh, Ian McDonald is number two. Oh, no, he had number one votes. So how many number ones did Ian have? Ian had two number ones. And who else had two number ones? Pardon? Who else had two number ones? Oh, Michelle. Michelle had three number ones. Okay, so who had two number ones? Ian had two number ones.
So we're down to Ian and Michelle.
Michelle. Wait, so no one else said, yeah? No, well, yeah, no, that... Yep. No one else said one. So then we go for, those, those would be the two top ones.
Okay. So, um, Matt, did you hear that?
I did, yep.
Okay, so we are ready for our second round of voting and this time we're only gonna vote for one person. Thank you.
He's...
Yep. There's Matt. Okay. We should be good on being live again.
Oh, good.
Jason fixed it.
We're spiraling, we can't get over. Michelle.
Okay.
Four.
All right.
Okay.
Three, four.
Should be six.
There should be six votes.
That's both. Yeah.
Did Matt cast his?
Five, one.
Oh.
Yay!
I thought it was four this morning.
Okay, so we have, um, Alicia prepared the oath of office so we could swear in Michelle orally tonight, but then we'd have to have this notarized and we are without a notary right now.
Tasia was the only notary here, I just phoned her out. We're gonna get a few people.
Well, yeah, but if he's not here in person, we can do it.
I'm working on it, okay.
The president will do it. Or we can wait until the very beginning of the, um, next week's meeting, but I thought Michelle might like to get it done tonight. It's up to the board. Would you like to do it tonight with me reading it or would you like to, um, Matt, would you like to read it when you are here next Monday?
Yes, I'd like to wait till Monday.
Okay. All right, let's have, um, Michelle come in.
Oh. Maybe last, Matt.
I'm still here.
Oh, good, okay.
Congratulations, Michelle.
You catch me! I thought you were gonna say, Michelle, you can go home.
Uh, we would, if it's all right with you, we would like to have you be sworn in at the very beginning of the meeting next Monday.
Okay.
And we have a special session on Monday. It starts at five o'clock and it's to discuss, uh, board protocols. We have board protocols that are, um, printed on our agenda, but they are from several years ago and our board has pretty much completely turned over since then. So in doing some board professional development, uh, the next step was for our new board to come up with our own protocols. So I hope you can join us at five for a special session for that.
I will be there.
And then the work session will begin at six.
Okay, is there anything that I will get before him to look at?
I'm just gonna mention that, so find, check your schedule and see when you can come on in. We'll spend about an hour together and we'll get you the file, map, pad, and everything you need to know.
Okay.
So just look at your calendar, see what works.
Yeah, perfect. And do that and then just get ahold of you.
Yep.
Great. Yep.
Awesome.
Well, good.
Thank you, Marge.
Congratulations.
Thanks, I was a little nervous.
Don't plan on seeing her for a while, you do. Remember you don't.
I will make it all simple to you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce, is there a second? Thank you, Marge, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, meeting is adjourned at six forty-two. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I wonder if the other people are still there.
Okay.
I think they were, they're passing out or they left.
Or they're all gone, aren't they?
Yeah, yep.
They're, I did thank them and...